I'll be when we're ready.
Oh, okay. No, I just seeing that. Through the screen. Okay, now we can see Sheena because the screen's cleared. Okay, so tenets at the beginning of the meeting is Council Jolly Broadhead Bromansky, myself and Mackay in chambers. Council Hughes online and Council Kilik will not be joining us today. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'm gonna do that.
Big surprise, Council try, go ahead.
I like big surprise. That the August 22nd, 2023 agenda be adopted as presented.
Call for the vote. That passes unanimously. We have no registered appointments. But we do have some minutes from July 11th to approve. Anyone have any issues with the minutes? Council Broadhead, you want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, all those in favor of the minutes? All right, that's unanimous. All right, we are into the first big item of the day, which is a storm water rate model for um project review. And I will turn it. You want to introduce anything, Diana, or am I taking it right to Mr. Graham?
Yeah, well, just take it right to.
Okay. Melissa told you put in an order for a month.
Yeah, no, I have tons that are being fired and I don't want them. Doesn't leak, that's good.
Are you using wheel? Use a wheel for that.
Oh, that was hand built.
Have you been using the wheel?
A little bit, love that. It's not my favorite. I can't do that at the cabin because I don't, we don't have power out there.
Okay.
Building is great up there.
You did set the cabin?
Probably.
And then you bring it in to get hired? Sorry, whenever you're ready. I'm just chit chatting, waiting. Okay, go ahead.
Get into it.
Get into it.
All right, um, okay, good morning, everyone. Uh, so this, for some of you, this will be a review because this thing goes back years. And for some others, you'll have never heard of it. So uh, we'll just do a high level review of the project. Give you some background and then talk about next steps. So I'll try to race, I'll go through this fairly quickly. I think we're the only thing on the docked, so there should be lots of time for questions and stuff like that. So let's just blow through it. So um, this goes back years. And um, it really started when we got some feedback about our rates for the stormwater system. And there were some questions about equity and fairness in terms of how we're billing people. So that was kind of the genesis for sort of beginning an investigation and looking into this and thinking about alternatives. Um, the city currently has a flat rate system, so we do have different. Um, the city currently has a flat rate system, so we do have different categories of customers. There's actually technically four different categories. Um, there's detached homes and stacked homes like apartment buildings. And um, also commercial and resi- uh, commercial and industrial. Those are actually two separate categories, but the to- the the billing rate for both of them is the same. Um, so when we, when we established the new utilities rate model, so that'd be uh, coming up on ten years ago now. Um, we basically just inherited the rates that we already had at that time. So there wasn't any effort to kind of build them up from the, you know, from the ground and sort of determine, you know, what should be included. It was just, let's just move forward. So that was simple, but probably not the best way to proceed, because it didn't really give us an indication of what was in those rates. We just accepted them as they were. And there's also no direct relationship between what we're charging our customers and the, and what they are um, costing us in terms of putting pressure on the system. So that created some issues going forward.
Even can I say this? Three and fourth, industrial, commercial is the same rate?
About commercial and industrial, that's right, yeah. So I mean, there's a, there's a distinction between the two of them, but I mean, industrial would be, you know, sort of heavy industry type things. I don't think we have very much of that in this city. There's, there's some, but you know, not like in uh, you know, uh, over east of here. Yeah, exactly. Sorry, my brain's not working very good right now, so bear with me. Um, so cost recovery under the current system, almost all of it is coming from residential customers, so over ninety percent. Um, and just, just a small amount coming from non-residential. So in terms of developing a new rate system, you know, we want to establish some criteria around that. A big one was, you know, making it equitable. Uh, you know, making sure that we're actually allocating costs in a reasonable and fair way. And using a user pays philosophy, so determining how to impact, how do people, how do people's properties impact the system, and charging them accordingly is really what it comes down to. So, and it has to be administratively manageable, because we have limited resources here, so we would really want to automate it as much as possible. And full cost recovery, we, that's, that's a big one as well, obviously. So in terms of best practices, this is sort of um, an idea of sort of the options from least favorable to most favorable, left to right. So, and a lot of communities in Alberta and across the country are, you know, using some of these very simple systems like property taxes or a special levy, you know, to collect money for stormwater. But these are simple and easy to administrate, but not very effective in allocating costs properly to customers. You know, in most cases, they're just like a flat rate or a percentage or something like that. So a property that is like a simple family home compared to something like Costco or something like that, you know, they would potentially be charged a similar rate, which obviously makes no sense. Oh. Now, as you move across the, the board, you think you, you get to flat fees and tiered flat fees, which is where we're at. And then the best practice based on information available now is a system based on impervious surfaces on a property. So impervious surfaces, which basically means water resistant surfaces. That basically is important, because water is directed into the storm system by hard surfaces. So if you have a lot of grass or soil or whatever, just absorbs the water, so it really doesn't impact the storm system at all. But all of the hard surfaces directed into the storm system, so that's really what is driving the cost. That's what the infrastructure is dealing with, is all that water that's driven off of properties into the storm system. So that, that is really the best way to sort of measure, the best way we know of right now, anyway, to measure the impact on the system. So we looked at figuring out how to excuse me, determine the impervious surfaces on properties throughout the city and then charge them accordingly. So sounds simple, but more difficult to implement. So a lot of work went into this. This thing, by the way, went through tons of iterations over the years, because, you know, we started simply, you know, at one point, I think we just looked at that total property area. You know, and then we just kept revising it, and you know, ultimately, we got to what I'm gonna explain in a minute. Uh, oh, the other thing, the other point I want to make here is that our current system is actually, all things considered, is not terrible. It's better than a lot of the other options that are available. It's not as good as we would like to be. I think there's a pretty big leap between tiered flat fee and impervious surfaces based system. But we're still on the right side of the ledger, I guess is what I'd like to point out.
Is anyone doing impervious in the region?
Pardon me?
Is anyone doing an impervious system?
Edmonton. Yeah, so that's kind of, you know, there are only a few places in Alberta that we know of that are actually using that kind of system. Unfortunately, Edmonton is one of them, so that creates obvious issues for us. So.
But it's Epcor, right?
Yeah, yeah, but, but that's what their system is based on.
Yep, sorry, do you want me to wait till the end?
No.
Operate the storm at a bit of a loss, because it's, because it's.
Uh, to be honest, I'm, yeah, I'm not really sure. Their, their system is actually even a little more sophisticated than what we were proposing. Uh, we did meet with them, actually, at one point, got some ideas from them, for sure. A lot of the information we got was, uh, we'd attended a session in Calgary ages ago. And there were some um, case, there were some case studies presented by Saskatoon, and I think Victoria was the other one. And they were very illuminating, like we learned a lot from, from them. They had gone through the process. So we understood kind of the concept. And then also a lot of the issues that they dealt with, and there definitely are issues which we'll talk about a bit later. So, um, yeah, so just to reiterate, i- it's about the property characteristics as opposed to anything else. And, and basically, I'm referring to the impervious surfaces on a property, uh, water resistant surfaces that drive water into the storm systems. That's the most important factor in determining how a property would impact our storm infrastructure. Um, so how to, how to get the information to actually build a model out of this thing. So, as I mentioned, this went through a few inter- iterations. Basically, where we ended up is we um, we used aerial imaging to, to sort of identify all the impervious surfaces and properties across the entire city. And that, and then we took that information and we were, we tried to simplify it a little bit um, by basically applying a median impervious surface factor for each planning zone in the city. So any single property would always be associated with a planning zone in the city. So there would be a median rate attached to each planning zone, and any property with existing within that planning zone would, would be applied that rate. So we would essentially look at all of the costs required to run the system. And then we would look at all the impervious surface across the entire billable part of the city. And we had essentially come up with a single rate that could be applied to a square meter of property in the city. So the rate was actually constant across all customers. The determining factor was the amount of impervious surface on a specific property. So that's what would drive the different rates between properties. So the idea being that, you know, if the larger a property, or rather, the, the more impervious surface on a property, the more money customer would pay, that's essentially what it would come down to. And that's basically, you know, demonstrating the user pays philosophy for a system like this.
Karen?
Um, this technology, does it, is it able to detect the, kind of the new technologies like impervious concretes and whatnot? It detects that?
Yes.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, don't ask me, this is the.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, we engaged Stan Tech to help us with this, so uh, they did a lot of number crunching for us. Yeah, it was extremely helpful.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so results of analysis. So basically, when we uh, modeled this new proposed new system, it ended up shifting costs primarily from residential to uh, commercial industrial. And, and that's what we expected to happen, because in general, uh, res- uh, commercial industrial properties are going to have more impervious surface than, than residential. So and it was about, I think it was about a thirteen percent approximately, like maybe a bit more than that um, shift. And you can see this, this is an old chart, because it also shows the area based one, which we briefly flirted with, but ended up deciding that that was not good enough, that we need to go to, you know, the full monty, so to speak. Um, so that, and that's what we wanted. So basically, this, you know, did help us to move closer to where we want it to be, because previously, for the most part, residential customers were subsidizing commercial customers. And even smaller commercial customers were subsidizing larger commercial customers, so it's not an ideal situation. So um, and as I said, it reflects the fact that, you know, most of these commercial industrial properties have more impervious surface. So overall, more than seventy cu- seventy percent of customers would pay less under the new system. And this includes, you know, a significant majority of residential. All of the stack residential customers would pay less. And even a significant proportion of co- of commercial customers would pay less under this system as well. And this is just a graph, just more or less showing the same information, slightly different. And this sort of breaks it up between residential and non-residential, but all basically telling you the same story, more or less. So, um, of course, nothing is ever perfect, and this, this had some consequences as well. So some larger residential customers would pay more under this system. It's really difficult to sort of categorize impacts in a system like this, because literally every customer is paying a different amount of money dependent on their property characteristics. So I can't, it's really hard to make a definitive statement on impact. So I tried to kind of create large buckets of, you know, of sort of information that would sort of give you a sense of what it's like. So um, you know, for the most part, most of the customers would not pay, especially residential, most residential customers would not pay much more or less. So the numbers show that most of them are paying less, but it's not a huge amount. In a lot of cases, it might be ten or twenty dollars a year, which is minimal. But because you've got so many residential customers, even a small amount from every residential customer shifted over to commercial does make big changes in some cases. So, and there also are a fair amount of large residential properties in this city, so some of those would see comparatively significant increases. Uh, now, how you define significant is relative, obviously. Some people would freak out if it was five dollars more, you know. So but in some cases, it might be a hundred dollars more, two hundred dollars more, maybe, maybe in a few cases even more than that. So the real impacts were on um, commercial residential customers. So as, as you saw before, actually, more than forty percent of commercial customers would actually pay less under this system, because there's a lot of sort of small businesses in the city, you know, that have modest sized properties. Um, you know, they may have more uh, they may have more impervious surface than a tip of, than a com- comparatively sized home. But um, they also pay more than a home. So under the flat rate system, the commercial industrial rate, I didn't look at this and I forget, but I think it's at least twice as much, maybe even more than that. So, you know, so they're already paying a little bit more, but under this, it might, you know, in some cases, they would come down a little bit if they, if they were, you know, like a typical store or something like that. The issues come into play when you're looking at bigger properties. So the total number of commercial industrial customers we identified is actually less than a thousand. But a few hundred of those were paying more, and in some cases substantially more, like you would actually see between, in a di- like up to ten thousand dollars or more per year increase over what they are right now. So that sounds extreme. Um, and it is, I guess, you know, depending on how you look at it. But uh, these are much bigger properties and are much more responsible for an impact on the storm system. Uh, and you know, there's a couple of properties that would be much, much larger, you know, I think, I, I won't name them, but I think you could probably guess what they are. So that was an issue, obviously. I think um, council was concerned both for the residential customers and the commercial customers. And I would point out, by the way, that especially given our proximity to Edmonton and the fact that they have a similar system. You know, a similar type of property here is getting a massive break compared to what they would get if they were located in Edmonton. Um, and so you would, our, our numbers actually related fairly well to Edmonton's numbers, because of the system that they're using. But to go from what we're paying now to what they might be under this new system, obviously a major, major impact. So we were asked to sort of look into that and say, oh, what did we do to maybe temper that a little bit? Hey, welcome to compromise. So um, so what we looked at is a couple of things. First of all, we looked at a, at a phase in of the system. So we said, okay, if we do something like this, what if we phase it in over four years? So then you're sort of limiting the impact every year and kind of easing people into it. But at the end of the day, you're still paying the same amounts after four years. So the other thing we looked at is um, to, sorry, I just want, don't want to get ahead of myself here, so um, okay, so let's, let's move on to the next. Yeah, okay, I guess I should make that point. So the problem with compromise, obviously, is that you are, you know, you're sort of watering down the reason why you did this in the first place. So yes, some people are getting hit hard, but if you start compromising and, and doing things to manipulate the system a little bit, then you're, you're reintroducing subsidage, subsidization, subsidization. I think that's the word. Uh, yeah, so um, you know, so basically, smaller properties are again subsidizing larger properties, which is our current problem, and why we started looking at this in the first place. All right, so um, you know, just, yeah, so just, I'm sort of cycling around a bit here, but um, yeah, so basically, the, the new system achieved our objectives, but there were some issues, for sure. So um, what we also looked at is tapping property size, basically. So from a, from a calculation standpoint, say, okay, here's, here's the actual amount of surface. But if we cap it at a certain amount, so that anything above that is not, you know, not going to be charged for that. So that certainly reduced the most extreme cases of cost inflation under this new system, but again, at the cost, at the cost of sort of subverting the system, if you will. So um, so what it came down to, you know, and I think that's basically where we ended, basically. That's sort of where we said, okay, we recognize that this is not ideal, but, you know, there are political issues here as well as financial ones. And so we said, okay, we can live with that compromise for now. And let's move forward, and council approved it under those terms and approved an implementation plan. Um, and we started moving forward. So this is a few years ago now. Uh, so then COVID hit, and basically everything ground to a halt. So any sort of non-core activities were effectively shut down for a while. Um, I was sent to the E O C purgatory, and so I that I wasn't working on this at all for quite a while. And I think, you know, basically, two or three years went by, and you know, we were all just working on different stuff. There are other priorities at that point. The world kind of changed a bit, obviously, so. Um, so this thing has been sort of languishing for a while. And um, so we had promised to come back to council at some point and sort of, you know, reintroduce ourselves to this, sort of figure out what, how we wanted to proceed. So the thinking was that there are just so many priorities right now, and there's a lot of really significant initiatives going. there's a lot of really significant initiatives going on at the moment. We still believe in this project. We think we've got into it for the right reasons. We think it's an improvement. It's not perfect, but it's better than what we have right now. But we don't think that now is the right time to continue this. So, you know, even though it achieves our objectives, there are some issues with it, but achieves our objectives. We aren't collecting any new money under this system. We're, we're just redistributing money to di- you know, based on a more equitable um, distribution. And, you know, and as I said, there's so many things going on. I'm working on a bunch of these things myself. Uh, long-term planning, multi-year budgeting, debt management. We all know all these issues that we're facing, off-site levies and and the other thing we need to look at is a, is an overall review of our utilities model, which is been in place for about ten years now, solved a lot of problems and still generally going okay. But there are some issues and um, I'm not going to get into what they are right now, but it's time to take a second look at that. And it's also something that we could incorporate this into in terms of the review. As, you know, so part of our utilities review would be potentially to also have a second look at this and sort of say, okay, do we like what this is? Are there things we might change? Should we, you know, plan for this coming in maybe over the next, in a couple of years or a little longer from now? But basically what we're recommending today, that given all the other priorities that are going on right now, that we'd like to shut this down for now. We're not going to bury it. There's been a ton of learning has come out of this. All of that learning is still valid. There is, um, even though the information is out of date, all the principles underlying the information are still completely valid. And, and this can still be resurrected if we choose to do that. But we just don't think now is the right time. It would, it would really derail a lot of other initiatives that are going on right now. And it would have to pull in people from other areas that are also probably working on stuff. So so we're suggesting that we table this for now with the possibility that it be resurrected later if we so choose. I think that is it. Oh yeah, they're all alternatives, sorry. Um, yeah, I mean, we, we could, we could still go ahead and do this, but with, with the knowledge that, you know, it would take resources and time and money and would potentially divert us away from other important stuff that we're working on right now. And um, the other thing we could do is delay it until we have more resources available, which could be incorporated into the utilities review where we look at it again and decide whether to go. So that's pretty much it for me.
Okay, um, I got just a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I guess we just had, at the internal audit committee capacity was right, was the number one risk in our corporation. So this totally is, makes sense that I think. Um, but I want to ask a question about the utility rate model review, maybe for you, maybe for some of the senior guys here. Is it in the budget to do this review? Because it sounds like it's not going to be something we do intern. We'll probably have to.
It, it's not in the budget and I don't, to be honest, I don't think it would actually necessarily cost us.
Oh, okay.
Other, other than internal time, basically.
Okay.
But it, it does mean we would be, we would have to obviously allocate resources to it.
Yeah.
Honestly, a lot of it would be my time, but not just me. I mean, there would be other people as well.
Or utility systems as well.
Yeah, I mean, I've been living with it for a long time now. So, yeah.
So I guess maybe it's, it's not in the budget. When, when are we planning on doing it? Or is it just, it's needed, but we don't have any sun in the corporate plan for five years, ten years, what?
I would say it's not in the corporate plan for the next year.
For the next year.
Right, so really go, go ahead, Diane.
Yeah, I was gonna say after we kind of get through some of the bigger things that are kind of on our plate or get them well. It's, it's something we can kind of pick away at as well. Like it's not something that has to be done, like in a very short period of time, we can kind of pick away at it. Um, but yeah, it, it is time for it to have a review and as well as the actual utility fiscal policy that we've learned some things um, that maybe are working quite the way we had originally intended when we wrote that policy. So we have, we, you know, we have some thoughts already as to, as to things we might want to look at and change, but it's it would be worth going through a comprehensive review, um, because there might be other things that we identify as well. So.
And tell us, I'm going to get into that now, but that was actually one of my questions, but we don't have to. I guess my only other question is would that utility rate model review include um, nonlinear rates for the water? Because we've talked about that for a long time.
Yeah, no, I mean, those are, yeah, those are some of the things where there are other things as well, but that's definitely one of them. And yeah, but there's actually a lot of things. I don't want to get into that now because I didn't really prepare to talk about that. And, and it could get complicated and technical and stuff, so. Yeah, but yeah, we, I mean, if you want to have another session at, where we talk about that, of course.
Maybe, maybe before the end of this term.
Yeah.
I think we should get into this. You've got, you've got a council that I think for the most part quite understands it. They might want to get a, a head start on that and he's just have a.
For nonlinear.
That and, and the storm, like.
The full summer view.
Yeah, like this council, Council Hughes as well, we understand the utility model pretty well. This, it, this, so it would.
We did, we, we did, when we, when we created this new model, we, we made or let me put it a different way. A few decisions were made at that time that uh, that we probably should have thought more about because they had longer term implications. So things like, uh, just to use a couple of examples. So we decided at that time that we would not allow rates to go down. We would only allow them to go up. So that distorts things a little bit. I mean, it didn't make itself known. I knew that at the time, I knew that I was going to. But anyway, you know, I shed sometimes. But yeah, eventually that becomes an issue because the other thing we have to be clear about is that we're only collecting as much money as we're supposed to collect. In other words, we only are supposed to collect enough money to cover our costs. And when you don't allow rates to come down, that becomes a lot more difficult. And it also impacts things like if you're trying to change behavior in customers and you want to manipulate rates to do that, you're a little bit hamstrung.
Yeah.
You know, when, when you have a kind of a rule like that or a policy or principle. So there are others, that's just a couple. Uh, so yeah, so there are just things, things that we've learned in the last ten years that maybe if we had to do it over again, we would approach it differently.
Can't believe it's been ten years, right?
I know, it's, it seems crazy, doesn't it?
I, it's, it's, it's somewhat disappointing. I, I mean, I totally understand it, especially when I read that they're not going to make any more money. Like it really doesn't affect that. And the fact that it doesn't align with our strategic plan and we really want to try to keep tight to the plan for capacity issues that I totally understand. It's just disappointing because I was hoping to in, do what you just said, encourage further future commercial industrial development to have trees in our parking lot, like more impervious service, collect stormwater to feed those kind of things, but the battle we'll have to do later, but.
One other thing I would offer up.
And then the U S.
Is um, I talked about how uh, uh, in general residential customers and smaller commercial cups of customers are subsidizing other commercial customers. So in theory, that is not necessarily a bad thing. The problem was nobody was ever given the choice to actually voice an opinion on it. You just didn't.
Yeah.
So, you know, you could argue that that's actually a good idea from a, from the standpoint of trying to attract business to the city. But, you know, maybe there should have been a, a more open and transparent dialogue around that, you know, and it's something we could theoretically do. Um, you know, so it, it, you know, it's not always a cut and dry thing. Like there's lots of things going on that could be read into it.
Because we have a tiered system, you could always charge the commercial industrialist a little bit more and that, that we set annually, those rates.
Yeah, and we, we actually talked about that. That, that's definitely a way to transfer costs in a bucket
Yeah.
from residential to non-residential. You would still have the inequities in terms of the different property sizes and stuff, and you could shift dollars just by adjusting the rates between commercial and residential rates. That's something we could look at as a, as a term.
And that, that I, you know, we did, yes, Diane's right, we did talk about that. My, my issue with that is that, you know, you, you're still, you're, let's, you know, you're still, let's say we increase the commercial rate by, I don't know, fifty percent, whatever the hell it is. Um, you know, you're still subsidizing larger properties with smaller ones, right? And, and you're, you're hurting the ones who can least afford it, I guess, is, is something that comes to mind for me. So that, that's kind of why I was a little bit hesitant on that one. You know, even though it is a, a somewhat easy way to kind of move a little bit closer to where we want to get.
Is that a policy, those rates, or is it?
Uh, well, they're approved by council every year.
Yes, they're standard or annual rate.
There's nothing in policy that would prevent us doing that shift.
Yeah, I mean, they, they're, changing the rates now would require some fundamental changes in the principles and policies that surround the rate model.
Yeah.
Uh, because they're basically driven by a arithmetic, I guess, is what it comes down to. So we would have to make some changes to actually manipulate those rates if we wanted to.
I got Ken, Wes and Alan. Do they have questions? Okay, go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, no, thanks. I think you asked my one question in relation to timing around the utility rates review. And I think it's needed and I, I uh, I guess, and you were sort of going towards where I was talking about around a ship, uh, shifting. But again, I don't like shifting without some sort of a principle or a policy that I can actually hang my hat on, like rather than just put it in the air. But um, I guess what I was actually wanting to also talk about, you just briefly touched on it, was um, is there an opportunity? And maybe it's not you, Stephen, to answer this. I don't know, there are Adrian's on there, but when we're talking about the land use bylaw and the changes and then you're talking about incentivizing um, businesses to develop those types of surfaces that would have a benefit to the storm model. Can we not link? Could we not link that? Could we not allow? I mean, I'm not sure if Adrian's on there. Is this something administration has thought about? When we were doing that review around um, providing incentives or change in relation to those large surface areas uh, that we're talking about in the model that would actually mitigate some of the issues around stormwater. So how do we link the two? Is that?
Yeah.
Is it, are we too late or can we do it as part of the land use pilot or should we wait and do the utility rates model first and then? Yeah, or is it a chicken and egg?
I, I think it's more of an engineering standard pieces of both to necessarily land use by law components.
Yeah.
You know, the land use bylaws, it looks at the relative uh, parking requirements will have potentially some of that impact, right? If, if, if overall there's a net reduction, um, but I would say that this, this isn't necessarily a land use by law.
Yeah, there, the other thing I didn't mention, actually, it, it's a great, it's a good idea, actually. We didn't actually go to that extent, but honestly, but what I did not mention is that if we went through with this implementation, there would also be a credit system for, for customers. So somebody like um, I think it's Costco or one of the big properties at the north end of the city. I believe they have a, a huge kind of uh, collector base underneath their parking lot, which collects the stormwater, but then releases it into the system in a more sort of um, gen- gradual way as opposed to just overwhelming it.
Yeah.
Storm or something. So, you know, so properties, the credit system, sorry, my voice is going. The credit system was meant to address things like that. So and to basically reward customers that actually do things on their property that actually uh, contribute to reducing the impact of the system.
But I, I guess just in relation to where do we capture that or encourage that, uh, where, I, I mean, is it part of the utility rates model? Or is it something we can bring in um, in the motion or like how, how would we best do that, recognizing um, some of the benefits of that? Because I know from a wastewater commission, like you just said, storm events overwhelm the system and they cause a lot of difficulties and challenges at the plant. So, I mean, don't get me wrong, there's thirteen municipalities, a lot of rural. So I mean, there's, it's, but I mean, if we, if we can start doing something like that, where, when, where, where do we do it in?
I would recommend we take that as an I R. There's one, some work to do there.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll, I'll send it in as an I R. It wasn't intended to make work. I was more.
No, no, but, but I think that will simply answer the question and get to where it might best
Yeah.
um, be codified. I think that, that would be.
Yeah. Sorry, Steve, an unintended consequence. Anyway, where is this where I'm here for? All right.
Wes.
Madam Mayor, I, 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 I read this, uh, I was, I was somewhat disappointed that I read. Uh, because you had done such good work and, and quite honestly, I, I saw this as a as a move to sort of bring equity to our utility rate system. And uh, remember the debate, it's coming back to me now. You're talking about emergency planning purgatory. Uh, but thi- this was a debate and I thought that we had really moved the needle around balancing uh, you know, how we play to pay and that the dependence on residential rate payers was was being reduced. I, I find it hard in my heart to implement a system that small individual rate payers are, are subsidizing multi-billion dollar industries. And I, I don't find in my heart too much uh, sympathy when they, when they calculate their profits based on the number of parking stalls that they have. So whether it goes up ten thousand dollars for them annually, I don't think that they lose any sleep over that. Right? So I, you know, you did such good work and then to hear that we're going to cancel it. I, th- that was, it was a hard written sheet for me to read that. And you know, I understand, uh, we got a passive full of work. If we introduce this, something falls off. But I don't know, this is important to me. And uh, so I, you know, we'll see what the will of council is here, but uh, I'd, I'd love to find a way, even if we uh, you know, even if we had to contract out the implementation of this over four years to me. That, that's just softening the blow for people who won't even, it's, it's not even a rounding error on their annual uh, profit statement. And the fact that our uh, large neighbor to the south didn't seem to bother them any. So, anyway.
Was that the bait?
Yeah, probably was. Had to get it off my chest here, so.
Adley.
I'm with Wes. But also was there an environmental lens put on this recommendation in terms of the long-term impacts of encouraging uh, development using impervious uh, or not non, this systems?
Well, I do, I, I know that we met with our environmental advisory committee.
Yeah.
Couple of times for sure, maybe even more than that. But I, I do remember at least, so they were certainly aware of it and wanted to be kept up to date on it and
Yeah.
of it.
Yeah.
Um, I, whether there were, you know, in terms of long-term uh, impacts, I honestly, I don't recall all the details. It's just been too long now.
Okay.
But they were certainly involved in the process.
Okay. Um, and so the alternatives, um, those dates set, those, it, to me, like looking at twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-eight, those look like that's built in, like we're aware of our capacity issues and that timeline reflects the fact that it's going to take a little bit of you know, planning to, to slot this in. Is, is that accurate? I'm kind of looking at both of you guys.
Yeah, I just want to speak to that a bit. Actually, that the earlier date actually doesn't incorporate capacity issues. That's actually how long it will take us if we start today to actually implement it. Like there's a, there's a lot of work. Basically, it's every single property um, in the city has to be assessed for impervious surfaces and the whole building system has to like, so that would be the obvious, we could do it if we literally start today. So that one doesn't address capacity issues because we'd have to.
But the twenty-eight does.
Twenty-eight would help. It's, it, it, again, it's so that would mean we wouldn't even start for at least a year or a year and a half and hopefully, you know, get through some of the other pieces and then that would become a priority, but.
I would move alternative one if we're ready for that, that applies.
Yeah, okay. Um, but that, so alternative one wouldn't take into account.
That's twenty twenty-eighth. That's.
Yeah, it wouldn't take it to account the entire, like, I feel like it should be.
Alternative one is focused solely on stormwater.
Yeah, I feel like it should be.
More false utilities.
So I should have the entire utility rate model review with this starting at the end of this, before the end, whatever, because we could have talked about that. I'm looking at that maybe without.
Yeah, no, I'd be, I'd be open to that.
Uh, is that it for now? Before we figure out what the motion looks like, Marissa? Question, so go ahead, Charles.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. The question I had was, uh, you mentioned lowering rates. You can't lower rates. Is that the actual rate per or is that the total build amount?
Yeah, no, there are, um, so.
Yeah, no, there are um. So within the utility system, there are flat rates and there are some variable rates. So each each utility, water, wastewater, storm and solid waste all have a series of flat rates. But water and uh wastewater also have variable rates based on consumption. So um the none of those rates are allowed to fall. In other words, as we go forward year, one year to the next, the rates are adjusted to absorb any incremental increase in cost. But if there is no increase in cost, we're not or or even if there's a decrease in cost, we're not allowed to reduce the rates. The one exception to that is the uh SCC fee, which is the supplementary capital contribution. That that is the only rate that is allowed to go up or down. And the reason is because that was put in place to cover off any discrepancies between transfers from operations to capital reserves and amount of money actually required to fund infrastructure. So that goes up and down all the time based on, you know, a a number of different factors. The biggest one obviously being how much capital spending there is, but there are other elements that go into that as well. But the what I call the operating rates, the flat rates and the variable rates, those are not allowed to fall. So it over time, that creates a a bit of a distortion and it's so it essentially leads to the point where potentially collecting more money than we should be. So if that's one of the things we need to be looking at when we're looking uh at reviewing the system.
So if you shifted, you know, like more extra to commercial, for example, and then you can't lower, where's the benefit?
Well, again, we're not. This is not meant to raise any more money than we're raising right now. It's just meant to redistribute the costs in a more equitable way.
And that over collecting wouldn't uh wouldn't affect storm because there's no variable on store.
Uh, yeah, that's that's correct. Yeah. So, you know, whatever amount of money we're collecting using the flat rate system in storm, this new system wouldn't collect any more money. It would just distribute it in a different way.
If I if I could just jump in, because I think I think what you're getting at is um Mr. Graham had mentioned that we we had talked about the potential to just move big buckets of money from residential to non-residential just by changing the flat rates if we didn't go to this full system. And we were saying that, you know, you could increase the the non-res. And then you're saying because of policy, we wouldn't decrease the resident. What we were saying is to do that, we would also actually come forward with a policy change that would allow us to reduce the residential rate as well because we don't want to collect any more money. So if we were to increase the non-res, uh, we would want to be able to reduce the residential.
Yes.
I think it wouldn't be book catching anything.
Yeah, I think I misinterpreted what your question was. So, yeah, that's absolutely right. If if we wanted to do that, if we wanted to change the flat rates and like just artificially change them, that would require a change in policy for sure.
Okay.
Okay. And then incentivizing impervious surfaces. Uh, would that be like, say, you have a new neighborhood and they're getting, you know, the special driveways or whatever? Would that be detrimental to people that don't have those surfaces, you know, in older neighborhoods or whatever, like they're not going to tear out their driveway and put in an impervious driveway kind of thing? So.
Could argue that.
Yeah.
I think when we had contemplated the credit system, giving people credit for having things that that mitigate stormwater, we actually aren't looking at the residential component and Edmonton doesn't. So Edmonton does not give any credit to residential properties. It's just it's too large to manage.
Right.
Um, but then based on this, it would be more of a storm industrial. They can make bigger impacts um for storm um but but their surfaces and stuff. So we weren't contemplating putting in any kind of credit system for residential um from that perspective. Um, but you're you're also correct in the fact that if you're giving a credit, again, because it's a zero sum game for utilities and we're only collecting what we need. If we give a credit to business A of a thousand dollars, somebody else has to pay that thousand dollars. So you are somewhat um subsidizing them. But again, it's encouraging the right behavior, right?
There's only so there is, you know, using an example, the example you just used, you know, there's really only so much you can do because we're not talking about massive amounts of money here, you know, even even like under the current res, I don't remember what it is. Let's say it's twenty dollars a month or I think it might be fifty to twenty dollars a month. You know, it probably costs hundreds, if not thousands of dollars to change a driveway. You know, there's no economic reason why you would do that, just to save a couple of bucks on your your rate. So, yeah, you you have to sort of be reasonable in terms of, you know, uh, what you can accomplish with this.
Just that you wouldn't have any choice, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
We had a very small and quick conversation. Maybe it wasn't even a conversation, maybe it was an IR um about just taking storm right out of the utilities and putting it right into our property taxes. And there was a there was a very good reason why we wouldn't do that, but I can't remember what it is.
Yeah.
Go back to that.
Yeah, that's.
Expect that question?
I will uh just to remind you of this.
Best best practice.
Property taxes. Did I remember an IR on that? It was a.
Yeah, I mean, easy. I I mean, it's easy, but.
I mean, that's why it's so attractive because it's simple, but it's not it's not equitable.
And there was also a lot of debate, and I think it was probably Dr. Richard Plain, who came and spoke to us a couple of times about how much are only like the roads are are really one of the biggest contributors to storm, not more than any.
But the roads also are our stormwater system, right? Like the the roads are what actually transfers, really, like they're part of the.
I mean, roads are roads are really the stormwater system of last resort, really, you know.
Yeah. And so just to remind you too, on this chart, like we said, like, even if we don't do anything, if we don't, we haven't, it sounds like you might be looking at making a motion for us to move ahead, but we're we're already on the right side of best practice, I guess, right? Um, it it's one more step we can go, but we're certainly not on the worse side, right? Um, or further ahead than than a lot of municipalities, so.
There's actually a church that pours their wa- parking lot water and waters their their premises.
No, that's exactly. That's what that's what I was trying to say. Yeah. I mean, we should be encouraging.
Yeah. Would we know like on average, how a a single family uh residential home? Is it sixty percent of the lot is like on average?
Oh.
Sixty percent of the lot is impervious and.
I actually want to say it's around sixty five from the data that we've pulled. We have all, we have all the data, but you have that at half time.
Right? Because Ken wants to be able to defend it. So on average, sixty percent of the residential, so they should be paying sixty percent of the storm.
But it's also it's also the amount of property area that I have to consider. Right now, there's no no difference between a house that's on a little tiny lot line and a and a great.
My corner lot.
Right? So it's it's the it's the area.
I would be.
You'd be.
Yeah. So I have a big.
Well, and then yours all drains into the into the environment.
Storm. That's true. I would fight you on. What do you think about doing now?
But sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Right. So before any motion comes forward, I would recommend if if ultimately a motion comes forward, I would recommend that perhaps expand so we can look at the implementation of this, but I think there is utility.
Yeah, yeah.
Utility. So looking at this within an overarching, at least a philosophical overview of our utilities writ large. Um, there there is a fundamental question. Do you want to maintain a cost recovery philosophy or do you want to change that? Um, right? And if we're going to do this, at the very least, that overarching analysis could be done and that could still be done, I think, on the timelines that are are in uh in number one.
Thousand dollars. Natalie's motion be um report a business case.
This could this could be a PM too, like that we could pass a council so that a thousand dollars comes from whatever utility rates.
Then the storm.
I I just think I I I would recommend that we look at the storm, updating the analysis, but we do so at the very least, under the rubric of our utilities philosophy writ large.
I mean, I did. I didn't even mention the point that that Bill just meant, which is a major cornerstone of of a potential new system, you know? I mean, that would be a fundamental change in how we would theoretically look at the system. The stuff that I was mentioning was really within the context of how it is right now and just a a bit of tweaking. But, you know, there's nothing preventing us from looking much bigger than that if we choose to.
But without presupposing an outcome clearly, counsel, but determine uh where you want to go with this. But I think it is worthwhile, at least us.
Counselor, who's got a question?
You do.
Thanks, Mayor. If if I break up, let me know. My internet's getting kind of fuzzy. We need to turn up the volume. Where who's got the volume on that? Can you hear me now?
Not yet.
Oh, just give us two seconds. That's okay. It's not you. It's this room.
It's not. It's not in Zoom.
Yeah.
No, it's.
Down to the screen and just turn it.
Can you hear me now?
Hang on, hang on a second. Hold on. She and I, we're just trying to.
I'm just doing tests. It's all good.
Really? Yeah, that's better.
Hey, go ahead, Gina. Thank you. Um, so Stephen, when you the recommendation obviously is to quash it, but I'm trying to figure out like the recommendation was not to do a complete new complete turnover of the system. So how much time and resources are we looking at and money to do a complete revaluation?
You mean for the utility system as a whole or just the?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking at I'm looking at what the alternative recommendation is going to be brought forward. So I'm just wanting to ask questions about that. How much money are we looking at to do that?
Well, I don't think I don't necessarily think it's going to cost us any money or minimal amounts of money at least. I think it's more about staff time uh to to actually conduct the review. Um, you know, it's really just looking, it's just doing a review and and considering alternatives and changes and so forth, but I don't necessarily think that's going to cost us any any money to do other than staff time.
Well, but I think if I could, counsel, I would say perhaps that's that's an IR as well uh to give a more fulsome answer in the sense that, you know, we we would have to do some internal prior the prioritization, uh, which is absolutely achievable. We'd have to figure out what what is delayed. Um, you know, the other option is to throw money at a problem, right? And 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 sort of pull in contracting components on it to mitigate that. You know, certainly not our preferred course of action, but I I think an IR might give you the. Sure, there to the point. You know, if we do it internal, it's not a lot of money. It's really about.
And I think we need to really think through what the scope of it as well, right? Because it could go from from, you know, a minor review to a major. Instead of we're looking at actually switching a whole philosophy, um, you know, to a to a rate of return type system that that might be a little bigger. It might require some external expertise.
That's fair. That's fair.
So, um, I guess my mo- a question of mayor is is the motion, I don't really know what the alternative motion is that we're discussing to bring forward. Um, but Stephen and Diane, I don't really consider our current utility model broken. Like it like I don't want to fix things that aren't broken. And my concern is that this is just not I not that you have not presented this as an alternative, but it'll work into a gateway into just simply using our utility rates to subsidize our taxes. Um, which is not happening at the moment. But if we, I don't know what other alternatives would be done in a review or a complete remodel other than just simply using that as a subsidizing of our taxes. So it would there be anything else that from the I realize you're going from top of your head, but we're on the floor with this right now. So, um, do you consider this? I don't consider our model broken. We've been very stable with our rates. Absolutely. I'm confused. Why you think instead of any due taxes or utility model works on a cost recovery only, right?
Right.
Yeah, so. Right, but the review said that it could be used as a different model. Uh, I'm trying to figure out what the review would even provide for us because the rates have been very stable. So would that be one of the alternatives? And do we actually think that it's necessary? Because when I look at it, it doesn't.
Well, okay, so that's a that's a that's a bit of a packed question. So first of all, the the review of the model, you know, it it's sort of, I mean, Diane's right when she says it sort of depends on what the scope is. How much are we willing to consider if if we're if we're talking about theoretically considering uh a re- a rate of return type system, that's a ma- that's a major change for sure. And that would encompass recovering more money than it takes to actually recover costs. So that's one thing. But the kind of stuff that I was referring to was really more technical in nature. It's dealing with some, what I would call some more minor issues. It's more more about tweaks than anything else and also about the ability to potentially um manipulate rates to uh address sort of customer behavior and encourage certain types of behavior in terms of how they use utilities. Things like water consumption, for example, uh would be a good one. So there's, you know, there's a couple of different ways of looking at that.
I just I don't see this system as being broken right now. I see this as it's still it's there going to be, when you say a um a rate of return, that's basically subsidizing taxes with utilities. That's what I'm hearing is just said a different way. Am I misinterpreting that? Because basically rate of return would be we give the extra money to the taxes. I'm actually hearing the exact opposite.
I heard. And and I'll actually put that in the motion.
Okay. One issue I heard was you can't lower rates. That's the one issue I really heard. So that's that's a big issue.
Yeah.
Um.
So I think one of the concerns right now about, you know, when you use, when you use the phrase you know, is it broken? Okay, that that's a maybe a slightly extreme way of putting it. But there are some issues that are in play right now that could lead to us recovering more money than we should be. And that that absolutely controverts our policy. So that needs to be addressed like sooner rather than later. Um, but yeah, I I I wouldn't characterize it as broken, but I would say there are some issues that need to be looked at.
After ten years.
To to answer his point, though, if I could, right? There is that. So if council says today, like that the philosophy that underpins our our utilities rates, which is cost recovery and and not a penny more is extant, then we won't spin our wheels on the rest of it. Absolutely not. Um, if there's appetite to look at, um, you know, a little bit more than that, right? Which is a a number of municipalities do that. Then then we would do the effort, but we're not going to spin our wheels on something that council has no interest in in us bringing forward at all. Uh, but that fundamental philosophical question, I would be good to have answered because everything else falls out from that.
Right.
In terms of our.
And council, I do say.
Yeah.
So just um to follow up on that, though, I realize that we, at this point, we're in a lockstep for the rates um going up. But if we were to collect more, the extra money is currently going into capital, then the SCC can go down to reflect that.
That's.
So so really, we can lower the rates through the SCC because the extra money that we're collecting for the SCC, the total capital is a zero sum game on a ten year rolling basis. So if we if those numbers go up, the SCC just simply goes down. And we could just do a a policy change without doing a complete review if necessary. Right?
That is correct to a point. Um, the SCC rates can certainly go down. But if we don't have a capital funding deficit, then they can't go any down.
So once it's at zero. So so this actually, I'm going to refund it happened. Happened one year where the SCC on one of them went to zero.
Yeah.
And we couldn't lower the actual rates.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the only time you're right. That's the only time that would happen. Um, because otherwise the SCC would go down if we had extra money coming through the flat and variable rates. But if the SCC is already at zero, um, technically, it could happen, right? Like math would make it happen that we couldn't.
I just wanted to make sure you guys have whatever tools and flexibility you need. And that's just one of the issues. There's others.
Yes.
Yeah. What what are the other issues? Because I mean, we can just change the policy and and reflect the changes on that one area, which is also very rare to occur. So um what would be the other changes that we would be looking at, Stephen and Diane?
I can't really speak to that right now because I didn't come prepared to talk about that.
Said that in the beginning and then crossed up that question.
Yeah.
And I understand that.
Yeah.
But the variable water rates could be. Well, it's just I I'm concerned about doing a review on changes that we can't even identify we need to have, with the exception of one thing which may occur once in a blue moon on the SCC. So.
Yeah, like for example.
That's why it's my concern.
So for example, I've had some feedback from, well, I've definitely had feedback from the utilities people about water rates, about, you know, graduated. Or what was the I can't.
Many years.
Many years. Yeah, exactly. Um, but the other thing I've had is from solid waste is they want to talk about cart rates. Right? So, you know, we have this situation where everybody wants the largest cart. But the largest cart is actually not really is is not is is actually relatively cheap as well. So you know, we've talked about the idea of maybe manipulating those rates a little bit to encourage. You know, we've talked about the idea of maybe manipulating those rates a little bit to encourage people to use smaller carts. By theoretically artificially increasing the price of the larger parts. I can't do that right now because of the way the system is set up. So that's just an example. Nothing has been discussed formally or anything. These are just backroom conversations. But I'm a little, we're a little bit hamstrung. To do things like that based on the way the system works right now and the policy, the procedures that are in place.
And, and I think, and I think one thing as well as, is any changes that we would need to make to policy to allow some of these things have to come to council. Or for, for, for discussion and approval and stuff anyways. So they'd be brought forward as recommendations. Um, to make certain changes, but they'd all have to be embedded into policy, which means council would have their say. It's not like we would be able to just go, go in behind and, and change all of these. All of these things without your kind of knowledge and agreement.
Okay, um, and I, I'm sorry, I missed the timeline. My computer was just, don't even ask. Um, but. What, if this alternate motion were to pass, what would be your timeline to bringing it back?
I don't.
And I guess this is a high level question because I know things may change, but what are you looking at?
So we were suggesting, uh, twenty twenty eight, um, for implementation of the storm system. And I would, I would think that we can probably do this within the same. This piece within the same timeframe or some of it maybe even a little earlier depending.
And we would aim to have at least an interim, something prior to the end of this council's term.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe we moved anything, but now.
I think we're going down a dangerous road with this alternate motion. I think this is the dangerous road we're going down.
So I'm going to her first. Um. Yeah. Harder wrote something. Do you see that, Council Hughes? Sorry, that's confusing with the target date of January twenty eight for the start of the review?
No, for the implementation.
Implementation, okay.
So it has to be before then.
To be honest, Diane, is fifty thousand dollars enough?
Yeah, I mean, that was going to be specific to storm and even that was a bit of a guess, um, kind of until we get into it, you know, we kind of threw that out there, so, um.
Could, could it be changed that administration bring a business case for the? I don't know, either twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget to do this for?
Can you get the business case done for the small budgets?
That'll be tight.
Well, I think our.
If we pass it like this, there's no business. I feel like even just a little bit more parameters around.
Yeah, well, yeah, because otherwise we're just, can I cut in?
Yeah.
Otherwise, otherwise we're just implementing, we're directing administration just to look at stormwater rate model system and build it into. Yeah, and build it into utility model rate, but I mean, potentially. There could be so many other many factors that we, we would, we're limiting them in relation to it.
I'd modify this to change it to, instead of just continue the development, just say that a business case be brought forward for the twenty twenty six budget.
Or the twenty twenty five?
Yeah, sorry, twenty twenty five budget.
Later than next year.
Cause then that would be.
Yeah, yeah, you're just asking for a business case. You're not asking.
And it's really the utility model rate review.
Yeah.
Including.
Including that.
I mean, I, we don't have to.
Including, yeah.
If we do. Yeah, I just wonder if we do this rave review, will that become like a corporate project then? Because it's going to involve more than just.
What if it's in, that's the business?
That's the business case for a year from now.
Uh, the business case would develop that crap.
Yeah.
And I guess one other question I had, so, so again, well, we kind of had final approval from council on the storm back when we talked about, um. You know, the implementation of caps and the implementation of the four year, again, it was, you know, being driven by. You know, want, not wanting to have such big impacts on people over time, um, some of the comments council brought had made. Like, are those things we want to look at? Because they are, some of those, like the caps that we put in, the phasing, all of that, is watering down. The impact, right, of, of actually charging the people who should be charged for it? Is that open for discussion again?
Was that a bad pun?
Say yes, because it's the better one we have today. It's inching us to the, to the, to the. Motherland of the best system, right?
So like, would we consider just implementing it in one year? Like this is the new rate system, here's the implement rate as opposed to phasing it in. Cause we originally talked about phasing in, we talked about putting appropriate sized caps in it. Like, are we open to that? Or do you want us to just go ahead with what was approved by council?
I mean, if I could just introduce. I would really like to suggest that we give ourselves the opportunity to take a second look at things for a couple of years. First of all. When we did it the first time, it, it really, what, the project wasn't as broad based as I think it probably should have been. At the time, there was a fair amount of sort of, um. Uh, volatility in staffing and utilities and stuff like that. So now we have somebody who's been there for a while and. Fingers crossed continues to be here for a while. You know, I would like to involve more people in the process and get some better feedback. And, you know, and just because I think that's just the best thing to do. So I'd like to build that into the grant, if at all possible. And we came up with a lot of good stuff, but we might be able to, to do better if we have a little more input, you know, so.
So if. Motion's very clear. This is cost recovery basis. This isn't about collecting more. It's about the, the equitable distribution and the rate model that, that underpins that. Um, and so I think what was sort of open are from that, we can come back with those recommendations.
So then, so then would we take out with the parameters specified within that AR if we want to have. Opportunity to come back with other.
Yeah, sure.
And then with the bottom, it probably needs to come out, right? Cause we're just coming back with a business case, so we're not allocating any money right now.
We'll remember that fifty thousand dollars, that's all. I missed to try to bear a business case where the. Budget development and implementation of stormwater rate model system. And build it into a utility rate model review. So that means we will see if this problem will sit next month.
Yes.
Which season.
But you may see little pieces, like if we have ideas or things as we're going through it, we might bring it to scout just for discussion, just to get a sense of how you guys are feeling about it.
Um, the last question I have for you, biggest impetus for you, for the request to, um. Pause all this work was staff capacity. Does this give you enough time to?
That was clear.
No, capacity up, whatever the right word is.
Um, but we'll, we'll look at those options. Uh, I think that's the business case will drive some of that, uh, the work to get us to the business case. I'm confident we can do. Uh, internally with some minor prior, reprioritization potentially, um, but the business case then will defy, will be the heavy lifting.
Is it, could it potentially be bringing in somebody short term, could it also wise to?
Conceivably a consultant or attempt by term position, yes.
Cause I, I am very positive of that risk of capacity.
Yeah.
Appropriation right now, so. Any other questions before I accept this motion? All right, so I, Council, any debates?
Um, just really briefly, you know, having administration, administration describe our current system as, um. Not terrible. Not, not much of an endorsement. Um, I, I really see St. Albert as a lot better than not terrible. And, and want to support. Policies and utility. Models that, that support best practices, um. Both because of the equity involved, you know, having. You know, my, my grandmother subsidized a billion dollar company is. Um, pretty distasteful, um, but also encouraging development of. Surfaces that protect the community in terms of risk of major storm events is really important. And yes, it will take a long time, but you know, I was once told that the goal of council or the, the job of council is to be thinking, you know, twenty, forty, sixty years old and. Moving towards that kind of development will be really important for, you know, my, my great grandchildren living here, so, um. That's why I'd like to see this go forward rather than kind of shelving it. So.
All right, that's brought it.
Yeah. And I, I agree with your last statement. I was better than doing nothing, which was the alternative coming forward. And, and quite honestly, what we have in place today might be. Better than just dumping it on a property taxes. I get that. But to the point is, is that you, you're residential ratepayers are still subsidizing large multinationals. Uh, who make a lot of money in our community. And one of the, one of the big, uh. Uh, issues that council needs to wrestle with is utilities. That's one of the reasons why we're here. And, and trying to ensure that our utilities are paid for in an acroval manner is something that we need to pay attention to. And so, uh. Uh, while that inequity exists, I think, uh. Uh, there's a problem. And this will go a long ways to fixing that. But you can, uh. We worked ten years on this. You did a lot of work, Stephen, and. I just feel that, you know, uh, I, I appreciate your comments, but sometimes we're going to miss out on what we could do. For the hope of what, you know. Perfect is in the future, and I'm not sure we'll ever reach that. So, um. Uh. You know, this is certainly a move forward. But I would love to have seen us just. Implement this thing. I think, I think I said this eight, four years ago, five years ago.
You can remember that?
But, uh, in any case, it is what it is. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm certainly going to support the motion. Uh, because it is a move forward, but I, I, I would just. Encourage, uh, administration not to make the utility review. This omnibus thing that takes us twenty years, uh, to complete, uh. And searching for a, uh, for a perfect system that is always a moving target. So in any case, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counsel Hughes.
Thank you, I'm.
Frozen. Frozen, Sheena.
Can we turn off your video? Anyone else?
I'm gonna be letting a post to the.
You, you're freezing up, Sheena, if you can hear.
These things, so maybe turn off your video.
Always painful.
It is. Drop right off?
I think.
Uh, my comments are to Stephen, um, you know, when you mentioned that a lot of the information over the number of years is outdated now and. Learned info, so I don't find it as wasted time. Research and everything and it's probably valuable information that we still hasn't have learned from. So I mean, to just put it forward with outdated information doesn't make much sense to me a, as well either. Um, you know, I see that we could have, you know, lowered rates for grandmother by simply changing the policy and, you know, and rate adjustments and whatever, so. Um, the thing that concerns me in this one is like you had already mentioned that administration as a gradual process will look at the utility. You know, body anyhow, so to put something forward to have dates on it like twenty twenty is just a date out of the hat kind of thing or. Or to say we need this policy developed, you know, outside of your per, uh. Perimeters, which I think you're focused on it anyhow. I'm not seeing that we need this policy to direct you to do what you just told us you were going to do anyhow. So, um, I appreciate that you learned and everyone's trying to do the best in utilities and, and make it the fairest possible. But, um, just because COVID came into play or everything became delayed, I don't think it was a loss at all, like it was, it was all learned. So, um, I, you know, I would have accepted the original. Well, just let you carry on finding the best solutions and possibilities with all new information and new, new ways of looking at things.
I'll jump in.
You don't have to.
No, well, I'll, I'll just jump in giving, maybe giving Counsel Hughes a little bit more time to reconnect, but I mean, I, I, I mean, I. I, I really, I'm going to support the motion. Um, I didn't want to see this drop off either, but I, I can understand the reasons and I agree with Counselor Burmansky in this, in, in that lessons learned. I mean, even when we don't move forward, we're always learning something in relation to. Um, best practices and that's why I don't see a, a problem with us. I know the system as a totality isn't broken. I, I agree with Counselor Hughes, however, there's always, best practice is always there to say, how do we learn from? Ten years of practices. There's got to be learnings and, and I think this gives us some opportunity. And, and all we're asking for is a business case for twenty twenty five budget, um, and it allows administration to come back and say, we can prioritize this. Or this actually goes through the, our, uh, our matrix and it may or may not. Be something that, uh, council will approve, uh, in our next budget. So, I mean. Uh, whether or not, um. The, uh. Uh, model utility rate was going to happen. I mean, and this actually just, uh, shows. You how important this is for council and it actually does give you some, some, uh, direction. So. Uh, I'll support, I'll support the motion that's on the floor for those reasons.
Counsel Hughes, you're back.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Um, yeah, I understand it's just a business case, but it really isn't because we start going down this road. And the reality is that our rates have been very stable for the past ten years and it's because of our current model has allowed that to happen. And so I get very concerned when we start looking for changes to it and not acknowledge the strengths of our system. And we can do minor policy changes without doing a complete review to allocate any weak points without having to do a complete review. When we start looking at complete reviews, they attempt to be larger sweeping to justify their existence and not just here. We want to just change a couple policies here and there. If administration's tasked with challenge to do something for two years, it's rare they come back and just come back with just a couple minor policy changes at the end of the day. So this is not about minor tweaking, this is about a major overhaul. And the reality is that if you, we want to just simply implement the stormwater system, then implement the stormwater system. There's going to be serious effects to some people, not all of them are multinational businesses. And regardless of whether we do this now or twenty twenty eight, those businesses and larger lots will be affected. And the dr- the change was so dramatic, that is why administration was recommending not to move forward on it because it was such a huge change for so, a lot of people. Had a very minor difference for the people who were residential. So it's like saving fifty cents on your water bill and then the other guys are paying ten thousand dollars more. And that was really the, when I looked at back, that was a problem and that's why it wasn't implemented, was it was such a heavy load on some people. And not everybody who is in that category is Walmart. So, you know, we can't just justify it and say that they're all in one sweeping group. So really I just look at it and say that the delay in implementing it was because the changes were so dramatic. And no matter how we want to move this, they will, the dramatic changes will occur if we are going to implement it. With a cost recovery or otherwise, those dramatic changes will occur. And so unless we're prepared to just do those dramatic changes, in which case just start implementing it. We have to acknowledge that it doesn't matter how many times you want to spin these numbers, that effect is going to happen. And, uh, so I'm personally not prepared to go down that road, especially considering just that we've had a very robust system where other places have had. Increases to the utility rates and ten percent plus, ours have been very stable. And, um, I think that needs to be acknowledged. It's not just that it wasn't broken. It's actually a very strong system. That does actually still allocate through the SCC ability to decrease the overall rates from, uh, um, from people. And if we just need to change that one tweaking, that does not require a major overhaul. So for those reasons, I'll be opposing it. Thanks.
Okay, not anyone. For staff recommendation or this, um, I'm getting, uh. What I've, I've heard that made me smile was in two thousand and thirteen, you know, West, you'll remember. Utility, uh, fiscal policy was the biggest election issue. Because we faced that big increase at the very beginning. Um. It's just nice to hear now from majority on council and from you guys that it works pretty well. It was, that was a hard decision. So that, that makes me feel good. So I. I, I'll support motion because eventually we wanted to talk about storm and I, I think no matter. If it's small tweaks or big tweaks, ten years is a long time without looking at it, without it one. We just talked about that with the. Long-term policing plan was ten years old. We should be looking at these seats at least every ten years. So both support this. Open the vote. All right, so that passes with Council piece votes and Council Bremstico. All right. So that passes with Counselor Peace's votes and Counselor Berman's to go. All right. Uh, you wanted a break before we go on camera? I need a break. So it's ten, it's five to eleven. So it's, it's ten minutes. So five after eleven.
Done by eleven. Totally.
Yeah, exactly. You're okay.